In accordance with Section 5 of the Open Public Meetings Act, the notice of this meeting was made by posting on the bulletin board in Town Hall and mailing to the officially designated newspapers a list of the meeting dates annually indicating that this meeting would take place on Monday, August 3, 2020, at 7:00 p.m. Due to the COVID-19 virus and mandatory quarantines imposed under executive orders by Governor Philip D. Murphy, Milburn Town Hall is closed to the public. A supplemental notice was given in addition to the annual notice due to the transformation of this meeting into a remote virtual meeting. The supplemental notice contained information necessary for members of the public to attend the meeting through the Zoom platform, both by audio and/or video means. The publics will have the same opportunity to participate at the appropriate time virtually, just as if they were attending an in-person meeting. The supplemental notice was posted on the Milburn Township website, Milburn Town Hall bulletin board, and supplemental notice was also forwarded to the officially designated newspapers and published in the item on Thursday, July 23, 2020. Mary McNabb?
Here.
You need to bring over Craig.
Yeah, I got him. Craig Clotner?
Here.
Jody Sharma?
Here.
Joyce Segal?
Here.
Steve Togar?
Here.
Wolfgang Chitouris?
Here.
Kevin Wenzel?
Here.
I'll bring Jessica over because she just got here. Jessica Glatt? Who was here?
Here.
Here.
Chairman Joseph Steinberg?
Here. Okay, folks, this is, I think, going to be a relatively short meeting, certainly compared to some of the recent ones we've had that have run very late. But the first thing, before we get to the approval of the minutes, I want to say thank you to Mary, spent a lot of time on the minutes and gave a whole bunch of changes to Eileen. I have some additional changes and some comments about the minutes as well. And a couple of other things that I want to talk about before we actually begin with the memorialization and the applications. On the minutes, on page 17, the first thing that I noted, and maybe it was a typo, but in the third full paragraph on the page, the last sentence, it says, "The existing 8,000-square-foot building that currently exists on the property will be demolished, et cetera." It's not 8,000, it's 80,000. And I, by the way, I want you folks to know that as I give you my changes, I have not read the transcript of the hearing that was prepared by Eric or Eric's people. As you may recall, this was the meeting where the recording machine at City Hall did not record, so Eric ended up having to do the transcript. I have not read it, but I know that that's an 80,000-square-foot building, not an 8,000 square-foot building. And just to be 100% sure, I went back and looked at it again today, and it's 80,000 square feet for sure. Okay. The second change, I don't know whether Mary got this one or not, is in the long Crowder paragraph, which is number four on page 17. Toward the end of the paragraph, there is a sentence that says, "The second access point is a non-signalized full-movement access point on the eastern portion," and I've inserted the words "of the" frontage, "that allows access, et cetera." And the third change on page 17 is the last sentence of that paragraph on Crowder where he said that the third access point that exits out to Morris Avenue will be a gated resident-only access. I know he also said, and I inserted the words, "Also, access will be permitted for emergency vehicles." I know he said that as well. Okay. On page 18, Mary picked up some typos and changes. I want to go, and I'm really directing this to Joy Segal. There's a sentence that says, this is not a change in the minutes, it's a comment that I want to make, and I've discussed this briefly with our attorney, Gail Fraser. There's a paragraph, short paragraph, that says, "Joy Segal asked what schools' children in the development would attend and how bus pickup would be handled." Period. The next sentence says, "Gail Price stated that schoolchildren," and she goes on from there. And I just wanted to make a comment, and I've discussed this, as I said, with Gail Fraser. That is not testimony, so Joy, your question was never answered. And for those of you who, to whom that subject matter is of great interest, just be advised that Gail Fraser is the attorney. She was not sworn, she's not a witness, and even though she gave the answer, as she believes is the correct answer, that is not testimony that was given before this board.
Joe, it's Gail Price, not Gail Fraser.
That was Gail Price. Did I say Gail Fraser? Okay. There was, in Keller's testimony on page 19, I guess that's the 1, 2, 3, 4th full paragraph. In the middle of the paragraph, it says, quote, "The applicant requires relief from section 606.6.1C2, which does not permit these access drives since the property they are accessing is outside the boundary of Milburn Township." That's not what the ordinance says. It doesn't talk about property. It talks about non-residential uses outside, which are not wholly within Milburn Township. So that change should be made. On page 20, again, there's a whole paragraph about the testimony of Matthew Jessup, who was redevelopment council for Springfield Township. And he testified at that meeting in July. Now, maybe it was because it was so damn late, but nobody questioned him, at least the minutes, and again, I didn't read the transcript. The minutes indicate that nobody questioned his testimony. He said, in his paragraph of testimony, it says that this was a collaborative, the redevelopment project in Springfield was a collaborative effort between Milburn and Springfield that started in February of 2019. And he then goes on to say, "The redevelopment plan was developed with Milburn review and input. It was drafted to ensure certain project details that requested were requested by Milburn." Now, I know this board very, very well, and I know that if it hadn't been 11 o'clock at night, there would have been lots of questions raised with Mr. Jessup. Who was he dealing with? Who was he talking about? Was this the township committee? Was there formal action taken by the township committee? Was there a resolution of the township committee in about February of 2019? Who? I know this board, and the questioning of this witness would have gone on for X number of minutes, as the board dug in to the question of, who's he talking about? When he says, "This was developed as a result of a collaborative effort between Milburn and Springfield." So the question I want to raise to you as board members is this. Should we have him back? Should Gail Fraser call Gail Price and tell her that the board would like to ask Mr. Jessup questions about the issue of who is he talking about? And I know the way I feel about it, but I basically want to find out what you people feel about it, you board members. So anyone who has a thought about it, please raise your hand and chime in. Mary?
I absolutely would like to have him back. And by, you know, as you were talking, I remembered that I was thinking, who is Milburn? Who was he talking about? But you're right, it was very late, and I think we're all very tired. So I would like to have him back and answer those questions.
Anyone else? Yes, Steve?
We, could we request some?
Could you lean over and get closer to the mic?
Pardon me. Could we request some documentation from him supporting his testimony?
Will you say that again? I didn't pick that up.
Should we request some documentation from him supporting his testimony?
I think, I think the first question is have him come back and ask them who participated in this collaboration, ask them the questions. Were they in-person meetings? Were they public meetings? Were minutes created, et cetera, et cetera? And see what his testimony presents, and if there is documentation, then we can ask Gail Price to present it.
Okay.
Anybody else have a thought as to whether he should be back? Yes, Wolfgang?
He should be back, and shouldn't, you know, shouldn't we also be hearing from whoever he purported to speak with?
But we don't know who they are yet, so until who the Milburn people are.
Let's cross that bridge when we come to it. If you, if you don't mind, I'd like to chime in here myself. I agree with Mary 100%, and also with Stephen Wolfgang. I think that I would like to know who he's talking about. Was there formal action taken that this board should know about?
Yeah, I mean, let me just jump in here because, you know, we're talking about minutes. We're getting kind of far-fetched in discussing that Saks property application, which, you know, is probably a topic that should best be discussed when we get to the hearing on that. We're not in the hearing on that, so I just want to sort of keep a narrow focus right now. Do we want to bring them back and have them answer questions? Bring this Matthew Jessup back so we can ask him questions and let Gail Price know that, you know, we want to explore this area, and it was kind of late, and we didn't get sufficient opportunity to do that.
Well, also, because they, also because there's a statement there that they hired a traffic engineer.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, so.
That's right. He did say that Milburn jointly agreed to the selection of Jay Troutman to prepare a traffic impact report, end of quote. Okay, let's first, let's deal with the minutes. Gail is right, let's deal with the minutes first. Anyone else have any other corrections or additions to the minutes that they can think of? If not, will someone who was at that meeting, was everyone who was here tonight, were they all at that meeting, Gail?
Yes.
Eileen?
They were all there.
They were all there, okay. Does anyone have a motion to adopt the minutes as corrected?
I move the minutes be approved as corrected.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Did we?
Raise your hand.
What? Did we lose, where's Craig? Is he?
Okay. Is there anyone opposed? Now let's get to the question of, should we ask Gail Fraser to call Gail Price and tell her that we'd like Matthew Jessup to return for additional testimony on the 17th of August, which is?
Well, I think you have, you have at least two or three members that already answered that question, so.
Pardon me?
I think three members already indicated they do want, they do want him back.
Well, let's get a motion. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Motion?
Motion.
By Joy? Second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? All right, Gail Fraser, will you make that?
Yes.
Okay, before we move on.
We've lost Craig somewhere along the way.
So he's not here right now. If he joins us before the application, we'll get him on. Don't worry, he is still.
Well, Eileen, I'm going to ask you a question. Remember, folks, that we left this matter of a new attorney for the board to take over from Gail Fraser in January. And the way it was left, as opposed to putting out a notice in the papers, for example, that we were seeking a new attorney, we decided that we would do it by having various people recommend new attorneys, and that a small subcommittee would be formed that consisted of Jessica, myself, and Craig. Now, Eileen, just off the top of your head, if you don't have it in front of you, how many lawyers do you recall, did we reach out to and ask if they were interested?
I believe we reached out to eight or nine, maybe 10.
How many have responded?
Four responses.
Four responded?
Yes.
Okay, so we have only four people who have responded, and I just want to bring you people up to date that Jessica and Craig and I will be reviewing those resumes. Eileen, if it's at all possible, I would appreciate it if, when the public works guy comes to take out the packet of the materials for the next meeting, if the resumes of the four people who submitted materials to you, if those materials could be circulated and brought to Jessica's home, mine, and to Craig's, I'd like to, even though we've got plenty of time, as Gail Fraser has pointed out, we really have to be moving on this. So I would like to begin to look at those resumes and any other material that was published or submitted to Eileen David. I would like that us to begin to look at that material as quickly as possible. I also want to bring you folks up to date on where we are with the traffic expert that we hired with regard to the Saks Fifth Avenue property. I still refer to the Saks Fifth Avenue property. You know what I'm talking about. It's the 92 Milburn Avenue project where our zoning officer indicated that a use variance was permitted for the driveways, 20-foot of driveways that exist in the township of Milburn. I did have a conversation with Lee Klein, who is the expert that we hired, and he indicated to me that he thought he could get a report done and in our hands prior to the August 17th meeting. Now, I'm hoping that that is true.
I got it today.
Pardon me?
I got it today.
Oh, you got it already?
Yes.
Oh, wow. That would be terrific if that could be distributed to, again, to board members prior to the August 17th meeting. And we'll begin to, I urge everybody on the board, please read it carefully. Lee Klein is a bright guy. He had the benefit of the Fishman Report transcript of the meeting, because there was no tape for him to listen to, but Eileen was able to get that to him. And Eric, I want to thank you for moving so quickly on getting that transcript done. But I think it's amazing, Eileen, that he's been able to do his report so quickly, and if we can get that into the hands of the board members, I urge each of you, as I will, read the report, study it, and if necessary, after we read the report, we may again ask Gail Fraser to reach out to the attorney for the applicant of that project to have their traffic guy come back. Almost certainly, we're going to have to take testimony from Lee Klein as well, and we'll figure out when that's going to be done. Now, Craig, while you were gone, were you able to hear anything?
Yeah, I heard you the whole time, for some reason, my video.
Okay. So we will hope, if Eileen is able to do it, we'll hope that by the end of the week, next week, when we get the packet that goes out for the meeting of the 17th, the Friday prior to the Friday before the meeting, we'll hope to have that material in there as well. Okay. Finally, I want to thank Joy and Mary again, as I do every time, for working on the memorializing resolution. And we have only one of them for this meeting. It's the 14 Shaw. Is that correct? Now, Eileen, who is eligible to vote on this?
All full members.
Pardon me?
All the full members.
Everyone who's here?
All full members.
Members.
All regular members?
Yes.
Oh, okay. So I guess you folks have all had a chance to review the Shaw resolution. Is there anyone who would like to make any corrections or additions to the Shaw memorializing resolution? If not, is there a motion by one of the regular members of the board to adopt the memorializing resolution?
I move adoption of the Shaw resolution. I don't have the number at hand, but that'll be good enough.
3749-20.
Thank you.
Good. Is there a second?
Second.
Can you call the roll on this, please?
Is that Craig?
Yes.
Yes, Craig seconded.
Mary McNabb?
Yes.
Craig Clotner?
Yes.
Jody Sharma?
Yes.
Joyce Segal?
Yes.
Steve Togar?
Yes.
Jessica Glatt?
Yes.
Joseph Steinberg?
Yes. Okay, we have only three applications on tonight, and let's call the first one with his calendar 3752-20 in CD at 94 Knollwood Road. And I'm going to grab my papers on this one. Okay, who's appearing on this?
Hello.
Hi, everyone, it's Giuseppe in CD, my wife Lauren, and we've asked Tim Klessi, who's our architect, to join us.
Can you guys see me?
No.
No.
Start your video.
I'm trying to.
Bottom left.
The guys gave me a new, oh, you're right, I see it. The guys gave me a new computer to do this, which is supposed to make it easier for me.
Well, we can hear you, but we can't see you, Tim.
Does your computer have video capability there? No, we had you for a second.
We had you for one second.
There you are. We have your stomach.
Now we have your stomach.
There you go.
Now we have your face.
There you go.
Oh, thank God.
Can we swear the witnesses, please?
If everybody would raise their right hands, please. Do you swear from the testimony about you giving the Zoom deposition, be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
We do.
Your names for the record.
Giuseppe in CD.
Lauren in CD.
Timothy Klessi.
Thank you.
Okay, who's going to tell us about the issue here?
Yeah, I'll introduce us, and then I'll pass it over to Tim for the details, but we recently purchased 94 Knollwood. We're working on restoring the property. Tim has helped us with the designs, and we're seeking a variance for an outdoor patio that was already approved by the historical board, and Tim could work through the rest of the details.
Eileen, I'd like to share my screen if I can.
Okay, just hit share screen.
I got this little problem that I, I see, I got it.
You got it?
Yes. Okay, I'm going to.
Get his credentials first.
Oh, I'm sorry. I have a licensed architect in the state of New Jersey and in New York, and I've been licensed for approximately 30 years. My license is in good standing, and I've appeared in front of this board on numerous occasions, and appeared before, I don't know, 50 other boards in New York and New Jersey and kind of across the nation a little bit.
Your qualifications as an architect are accepted by this board.
Thank you.
I'm seeing four pictures that are very small, very hard.
Now, he's going to tell us which one he's going to enlarge.
I'm going to just open up my BOA sheets, which are exactly the same as your BOA sheets.
So we're not going to mark them.
Okay.
The, and I just want to look at the lot, and I think you can see my cursor, correct?
Yes.
Okay. On the bottom is Knollwood, on the side is Taylor Place, and on the top is Western Drive. So this is the old Goldstein's house, if anybody remembers it, but it really has three front yards, and it has one side yard, and that side yard is right by where my cursor is to the left, the width of this garage, right? All of these other lots. All of these other lots are really front yards. So if I look at, we are planning on putting a raised patio. It's approximately about three feet high. In this location that I'm circling right now, we have left the driveways exactly as they are. Now, this patio is far from the street. I think that the closest street is the Taylor Place, which I don't remember exactly, but I think it's 73 feet, whereas 80 feet is required. But the real problem is, is that this patio is actually located in the front yard. And the problem with this site is that it has three front yards. I originally thought that if we could meet the 80-foot requirement, we wouldn't have to appear before you. But Eileen corrected me with the fact that it's 80 feet from the street and not in a front yard. Okay, so it would have to be sort of in a side yard, 80 feet from the street. In this case, I really have no side yard. So I'm just going to try to, I got it, move to my next sheet. So this plan is oriented exactly the same as the last one. The bottom is Knollwood, up the right side here is Taylor Place, and on the top is Western. And this area is where we put in this raised patio. You can kind of see the driveway right there. You can see how I left a little three-foot planting bed, right where the hand is, so that we could put in a little planting in front of the patio. These stoops, which appear on this drawing to be solid, are actually demolished as part of this work. You know, that's a demo layer, but for some reason on this PDF, the demo layer is coming up solid. But the idea is to remove the stoops and install this patio at this location, and then come off the patio and go down to the sidewalk. This raised patio that we're talking about is about three feet above grade. It's, I'm going to take you to my next sheet. If I look on the elevations, I'm going to go from the Taylor Place side first. That's what we call the right side elevation. And it's this area where you have this patio added with brick that matches the brick of the rest of the building, and then we have a railing around it. That's really our new raised patio. If I go from the, what we call the left side, which is really the garage side, but the garage has been removed, you can see the patio sort of off the picture plane. If I come to the final picture, this is the, what we would call the rear of the building, but it's really the Western Drive side. And there is our new patio. I'm just gonna go on a little bit and just show you the existing photos of the home, right? These are kind of the.
Okay, so I think you have. Tim, how many photos in total? Is it four photographs or three?
I have three photos, and I have a little video I took, which we can see if you guys.
Okay, so the three photographs will mark as A1, and the video will mark as A2.
Okay. So those are really, it's hard to, the same kind of view.
That's photo number one or number?
I'm sorry, I'll do photo number one is taken down by the, more the corner of Knollwood and Taylor Place.
So that's the front of the house?
Yeah, yeah, yes. If I go to my photo two, taking a little more. You know, Giuseppe's an IT guy. He probably knows exactly why this photo won't open. I don't know why. Oh, here it comes. Taken more on Taylor Place, okay, kind of up the street. And then, I don't know if any of you had a chance to see this, but this house is under total restoration right now. And it's gutted, the brick has, the paint has been removed off of the brick, and the windows actually finally arrived today, so they'll go in next week. This house is going to look great when completed. I'd like to just walk you through the video that starts on Western Drive, wraps down Taylor Place, and then comes back onto Knollwood. Right, everybody knows where I am. That's the house that's down in the hollow on Western Drive that was the old carriage house for the next house that we're going to see as I continue here. This is probably the best, you guys can hear my voice over this, correct or no?
Yes.
Oh, okay, good. This is probably the best shot to sort of see where this is. It's like right in that area, right there. There's the driveway coming across. That dumpster is actually sitting in the driveway closer to Western Drive than where our raised patio is. I'm going to go just a little more. You can't, this is the side driveway of a Taylor Place. Right here, you may be able to see a glimpse of this raised patio right about at that elevation. Because if I look at where this brick chorus is here, the little roll course of the brick, that's about the elevation of the patio. That's actually about three feet above, above the grade. We are planting around the perimeter of the patio in order to minimize its visual impact from the street.
Can you describe those plantings, proposed plantings?
Conifer, like a box, boxwoods, you know, 36-inch-high boxwood. So it'll actually become a hedgerow, you know, like actually fill-in solid. I just would like you to see the type of work that we've been doing on this house. We've been, I think, lucky that we have a client that has been willing to buy this house, which really was on the market for a long time, and really spend the time to really restore this building. And I think this whole impact of this will come up really well over the next two weeks as these windows start to go in and the siding can start to get cleaned up here. I think I'm just saying the same thing I just said. The, the brick, it's hard to see it in this video, but the brick is all being, the paint is being chemically removed, and that stone is now re-exposed at the bottom of that addition. It was, I think, done in the early 70s. The dormers are all being reworked. There's a lot of work going on in this house, and it needs some type of connection between the building and the outside space. And this is the smartest way to do it with the most minimal impact to the neighborhood. Okay, so that is really my entire presentation. Is there any question?
Are there any questions of this witness?
Tim, is the, Eileen's report indicates this is not in a historic district. You went to the HPC with this?
Yes, it is in the, it's a designated house in the historic district.
Which, which one?
Both. This is in the historic district.
Which historic district?
The Short Hills District. And it's actually a designated house, which means it's kind of criteria is probably a little more, I don't know, it has sort of a higher approval criteria. It's, it's one of the Hartsworthen houses. If that means anything to anybody on the Board of Adjustments, you know, built in the, I, I, I think probably 1910. I really don't know. I'm sure, I think Lauren probably knows exactly when it was built.
All right, well, I only ask because I didn't see an HPC resolution in the package.
Oh, that's awful, but there, we have one.
Yeah, and it wasn't indicated on question.
You do have one?
Yes, yes.
Do you have it with you tonight?
I don't think I've ever actually received it. I don't normally get them, but the owner has it. Can the owner, are the, are the owner, is the owner's mic on?
Yes.
You have to unshare your screen, though, because we can't.
Got it, sorry, good.
So.
Do you have the resolution from the HPC?
We do.
Do you have it on you now or no?
We are on vacation, so I don't have it right now in hand, but I'm happy to look through my emails right now and see if I can find it that way, too.
Yes, we need a copy of it, and we need the date of it. I would like to ask this question. Except for the conifers that you propose to plant, would this patio be visible from any, any of the three streets?
If, if the planting was removed, like, let's say the boxwoods that we're putting around the patio were removed, are you saying, then would it be visible? Is that what you're saying, Joe?
Yes.
Yes, and I think the video shows that, that there's some holes in the existing perimeter planting, and you would be able to see this through those holes. It's not, you have to pay attention and really look, but it's hard. Like, I think you could see it from Western Drive through the buffer planting that's on Western Drive. I mean, I guess we could supplement that buffer planting to mitigate that.
All right, like, from Western Drive, though, it is, it meets the, meets the setback requirement from Western because it is set back.
At 156 feet.
Yes.
It does.
Tim's usual poor handwriting, 156 feet to Western. So it far exceeds the accessory setback requirement from Western. The only place, I mean, it's still in the front yard, don't get me wrong, but the only place where it does not meet the 80-foot requirement is along Taylor, Taylor Place, where it's three feet short.
Can you be a little more specific as to the plantings? In terms of how many boxwoods are you proposing to plant? How high above the root wall when they are put into the ground? We have, if Gail Fraser is going to draw a memorializing resolution, assuming that these variances are going to be granted, we've got to be specific.
Yes, I'll do it. Just give me one sec. Can you email Barton and ask him to send us the HPC memorialization for in CD as soon as he can? He's, he's open to him. I, I'm just going to email Barton and see if I can get him to send us the HPC resolution.
So I just wanted to add. I just wanted to add as a liaison to the HPC. Yeah, I was in that meeting, the June 4th meeting where the memory, this was accepted by HPC, application number 449. So I was in that meeting where this was accepted.
But you don't have the resolution, do you, Jody?
I have it in front of me. Yeah, I have it with me.
So, Eileen, what can, can she share that? And will that become part of the record? Or how do we get it part of the record? So it's on the website?
What do you mean on the website?
In other words, I need a copy of it. So I noticed that when I look at the minutes, I can go to the video, and I can see whatever gets shared.
Yeah, if she has it, if she has it in front of her, she could share that screen.
Let me know if you're able to see it.
Yes.
Yes.
We have it.
Okay, so we'll mark that as A3.
It's application number 449.
449, yeah.
Yeah. Is there a date on the?
And the date was June 4th, 2020.
June 4th, 2020, yeah.
Thank you, Jody.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Thank you. And I want to go back to the number of three.
I will. The, the boxwoods would be two foot six high at three feet on center around the perimeter of the patio. And I only want to put them at, like, a three-foot-on-center dimension, because otherwise they tend to choke themselves as they start to grow.
And how high will they grow when they mature?
Yeah, I, they'll keep growing, but I think we'd want them to mature to about three foot six, four feet, or they're going to look awkward, you know, like too high. Like, I think it should cover the patio. Let's say the patio is three feet above, maybe the top of the boxwood should grow to three foot six, four feet at the most. But that would mean if you're on the patio, you see about a foot of planting.
And can you estimate how many would need to go in?
Nineteen.
Is that enough for you, Gail?
Yeah, that's more than enough.
Okay. Any questions from board members of any of these witnesses? All right, is there a motion from a regular member of the board?
Can we make a comment?
Yes, absolutely.
So I want, Tim invited a comment by asking if any member on the board thought the Hartsworthen house was important. And I want to say without question, the Hartsworthen houses are extremely important. They're very, they're designated houses in the historic district. And whenever a homeowner comes along and wants to restore one, they rise to number one on my list. So thank you for doing that and preserving that historic house for the benefit of town.
Our pleasure.
Until it's finished and all to see it, so, and for us to move in.
Anyone else have a comment?
Hey, Joe, before we go to a motion, is there anybody from the public that has any questions or comments? Hey, Joe, before we go to a motion, is there anybody from the public that has any questions or comments?
Yes, that's a good, that's very good. Is there anyone from the public here?
No, they're all on the next.
Yeah, they're all applicants.
Okay. I hear none and I see none. So we'll proceed to a motion. Is there a motion to approve or deny these vary, these two variances?
I'll move to approve.
Is there a second?
Wait, is that with the landscaping condition?
Yes, with the conditions as outlined and specified.
With the boxwoods?
Correct.
Is there a second?
I'll second the motion.
Joy, second.
Mary McNabb?
Yes.
Craig Clotner?
Yes.
Jody Sharma?
Yes.
Joyce Segal?
Yes.
Steve Togar?
Yes.
Jessica Glad?
Yes.
Joseph Steinberg?
Yes. Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we're going to proceed to the second case on the agenda, which is 50 South Terrace.
So. I have Dan Dubinette and Kiran Subramaniam. Yeah, because I think Kumar is the best one. Yeah, okay. There's Danny.
There's Dan. All right, who is going to testify? Raise your hand, please. Does you then?
Yeah, there they are.
Yep.
Okay, you want to.
Let me just swear you all in. If you were just, your hands were raised. Do you swear from the testimony about to give tonight to me to be the truth, the whole truth, done by the truth?
I do.
Just state your names for the record, please.
Kiran Subramaniam, 50 South Terrace.
Fatih Morhan, 50 South Terrace.
Just spell your name, please.
First name, P as in Peter, A D as in David, M as in Michael, A S H R E E. Last name, M as in Michael, O H A N as in Nancy.
Thank you.
And Daniel Dubinette?
Mr. Dubinette, you want to give us the benefit of your qualifications, please?
Thank you. Yes, I'm a licensed architect. I attended undergraduate Syracuse University, NGIT for my master's degree of architecture. I've been practicing residential architecture since 2000. I've appeared before this board and others in Essex County.
Your license is, is in good standing, is it?
Yes.
Your qualification as an architect is acceptable to this board, are acceptable to this board. Mr. Dubinette, I have, before you begin, I was very interested in reading the application and I noticed that there were, at least in two, on two occasions, there was a reference to increased safety. When you propose, when you talk about the proposal in this case, would you stress the issue of safety and why you think the issue of safety is involved here?
Yes, absolutely.
Are you going to begin?
Yeah, I'd like to begin. I would like to share a screen and it's the same documentation that you have, except I've added a photograph of the site and a tax map and also the average front yard setbacks. The short story is that this proposal, we're seeking one variance, that is for the front yard setback. So now let me share a screen. Okay, do you see it?
No.
Okay.
Yeah, there we are.
Now we can.
Okay. So this is a photograph that I took that depicts the site as is. It's a photograph taken by me. And so what we're seeing, this is the front of the house, it's on South Terrace, this is number 50. And what we're seeking to do is add a front vestibule to the home. The home is existing non-conforming to the front yard. It's 30.9 feet. We're proposing a front vestibule that'll project four and a half feet from the house. It'll occupy the exact depth of this front stoop, be a little bit wider. It's about 60 square feet. And it puts us at 29.4 feet from the front yard setback. And really, it's just a, you know, we're going to just extend the roof line to be able to create a front vestibule. The need, the need for the front vestibule, and thank you, Joe, for mentioning the, the safety. It's A, safety, B, function. I'm just going to zoom in on the floor plan of the existing home. Okay. So here's the front, proposed front vestibule, four and a half feet from the face of the house. This dotted line depicts where the door is now. So the front stairs are about three and a half feet away from the front door. So if someone opens the front door and someone's coming down the stairs, it's, creates a potentially dangerous situation. It's uncomfortable and it's a little tight, so we would propose to pull the front door forward and allow them a small place to have a closet and a bench. And currently, if you remember the photograph, there's no overhang over the front stoop. It's a very steep roof line, so they get a lot of, they get a lot of water falling off the roof onto the bluestone patio. And so it's always a, it's always icy. This is the north side of the house, so it tends to be very icy. So as part of our front vestibule, we're going to then also have an overhang. So furthering, you know, promoting the safety, they use the front door often. So it'll be good for the homeowners and for anybody coming to the front door. We're just going to extend the roof line down and create this cute little curve with brackets to cover, cover the overhang. And again, the home, and like many of the other homes on South Terrace, are all existing non-conforming front yard setbacks. So this is our, this is the building envelope. This is the proposed vestibule. And so we're not going to be, we're not going to go any closer to the circular drive than already exists. And this is a tax map. And I found the average front yard setbacks to be 30.4 feet. So we're proposing 29.4. There are homes that are at 29.4 and even 27. So when I surveyed the, the street scape, it's within keeping of the fabric of, of the neighborhood already. So there are no real negatives as a result of this application, only positives. And we feel that the only people who are going to be affected by this addition, of course, will be the homeowners in a positive, in a positive way. And so I think it'll enhance the curb appeal and will not cause any negative impact to the neighbors or neighborhood. I don't know if, if, if my clients would like to say a brief words about it.
Yeah, thanks, Daniel, and the members of the board. I really appreciate your consideration. I think over the last couple of days, I observed a few of the board members stopping by, and I really appreciate.
Hold on.
Hold up.
I don't hear him.
Yeah, I don't hear him.
Frank, come in.
Wait, wait.
I mean, there's always people running into the door, running into, coming down the stairs, creates a little bit of a traffic jam. And as Daniel mentioned, during winter, this being a north-facing door, you get some water flowing down the roof and icing on the current stoop. I think taking everything into consideration, we have made a very modest proposal. Actually, we bought the house about five years ago, loved the neighborhood. And in those five years, I tried everything possible to make the, the entry work. And eventually, nothing has worked out. So that's why I bear in front of the board to seek your approval of this very small variance.
Are there any board members who have questions of any of these witnesses? Are there board members, is there anyone in the audience who has any questions of these witnesses? Eileen, is there anyone here on this case?
There, the next case. Gail, just for logging in purpose, the, the photo and the front yard setback calculations, should we enter them?
A1. A1.
Okay, as the photo and A2 for the front yard setback calculations, would that, or you want to do them both as A1?
Well, did he post something on the front yard setback?
Yeah, yeah, a calculation sheet of the average front yard setbacks.
The average.
Shared?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I, I didn't see that.
It was a tax map.
Was it part of A1 or no?
No.
No.
Okay, so mark that as A2.
Okay, perfect.
It must have been.
I have one question, Mr. Dubinette. Are your clients, I, I understand that there will be, in effect, a, an adjustment to this McCadam driveway. But there will be still a portion of the lawn that will be, that will run along the street and along the side of the driveway closest to the street. Is your, are your clients, I, I, the reason I'm going to ask this question is that I visited the property. That is to say, I drove past it, and it's directly opposite Coniston, which is across the street. And it's very, very, it's, it's, this particular property is very open to the street. Now, I understand that the variance that your clients are seeking is relatively modest. And the house already violates the front yard setback. But is your, are your clients willing to plant some evergreens in that, on that lawn area? So the, so as to break up the view of the front of the house? I don't want the, the trees planted too close to the street because then it'll be difficult getting out of this driveway. It'll be difficult seeing the road, especially to the left as you come out of the driveway. But are they willing to plant, say, four evergreens across the front of the property?
Yeah, I would, I would suggest to them that they would plant, I think boxwoods would be appropriate because they won't grow too tall. You know, we want to watch the sight, sight lines when you're pulling in and out of the driveway. So maybe a small row of boxwoods in the front. How do you guys feel about that?
Yeah, that sounds good. That sounds good.
I would suggest, I'm looking at the tax map, I mean, the, the plot plan. I think about six boxwoods spaced about two feet apart would then grow into each other. And then try and maintain a height of, of three and a half feet. I think that would be nice. That's a good suggestion.
And let's say they would be set back at least five or six feet from the curb. Maybe, maybe a little bit further back.
Yeah, we probably have to plant on our property line.
No, they have to plant them on their own property. They can't plant them out in the right of way.
Right. Now, I'm saying, I'm looking at the plot plan and there's a kind of a half circle that will be.
You mean the Belgian, the Belgian block curve on, on their own property?
Yeah, that might be nice if you follow the curve of the Belgian block.
You're suggesting about, about how many trees?
One, two, three, four, six.
Six.
Six boxwoods.
Anyone else have any comments or questions? Gail Fraser, is that enough information for you to draft a resolution?
Right, six, six boxwoods. They'd be spaced two feet apart. I, I thought, Danny, were, were you, what was going to be the height at the time of planting? I thought you wanted them to maximum of three and a half feet.
Yeah, I would say they'd probably be 30 inches at, at start.
Okay.
Two and a half feet.
Anybody else have any comments or questions? I'm closing the public portion of the meeting now.
Okay.
Comments or questions from board members? One variance is requested here, which is a front yard setback variance for the new construction on the front of the house, the proposed vestibule. Is there a motion with the condition as indicated, the planting of the trees?
I'll make.
Joy?
Hi, I'd like to make a motion to approve with the.
Joy will make a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Craig, your second.
Mary McNabb?
I'm, I've lost the picture. Yes.
Craig Clotner?
Yes.
Jody Sharma?
Yes.
Joyce Segal?
Yes.
Steve Togar?
Yes.
Jessica Glad?
Yes.
Joseph Steinberg?
Yes. Good luck with the project.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we have one more case on the agenda. It's 341 Old Short Hills Road.
Hello.
Hi. Who's going to testify here?
Yeah, hi.
Wait, wait. Let me just swear you all in. Everyone raise their right hand, please. Do you swear from testimony about to give in tonight's Zoom meeting to be the truth, the whole truth, done by the truth?
Yes.
Okay, your name is for the record, please.
Shashank Kumar from 341 Old Short Hills Road.
Shivangi Mathur.
Just spell your name, please.
Shivangi Mathur.
Just spell it.
S H I V as in Victor, A N G I, Shivangi, and last name is Mathur, M A T H U R.
Thank you.
Timothy Klessi, K L E S S E.
Mr. Klessi, your qualifications, please.
Licensed architect in New Jersey and New York. Have been licensed for approximately 30 years. My license is in good standing. I've appeared before this board on numerous occasions and also appeared in many other boards in the New Jersey area.
Okay, there's one variance being requested here, which is a, a front-facing garage facing the street. Mr. Klessi, can you indicate why that is required?
Okay, I, I didn't know if, Mr. Kumar, you want to give us just a little background? Okay, I, I didn't know if, um, Mr. Kumar, you want to give us just a little background first?
Uh, yes, certainly. So, uh, we moved here last year. We purchased the property in, uh, September of 2019. Um, we're a family with two kids. I have an eight-year-old boy and a two-year-old girl. And we moved from Jersey City, uh, primarily, it's a great town and, uh, great school. So that's what we moved for. And after moving in here, we realized we probably needed a little bit more, uh, living space. And at that point, we sort of undertook, uh, a project to, uh, to improve the garage space, uh, for us. And we went ahead and obtained this permit back in February of, uh, 2020. And then at that, uh, later on, once the, uh, drawings were approved, we began the work. And, uh, after that, Frank came in for inspection. And when, uh, he came in, we, you know, he indicated there's a little bit of disconnect between, uh, the drawings and the work, and it needs to be, uh, cleared out. And at that point, uh, you know, uh, we approached Mr. Plessy to work with us. And, uh, you know, just help us out with how this, uh, project needs to be addressed. Um, I will let Mr. Plessy take over from here.
So I, I think Eileen, I'd like to share my screen if I can.
Okay.
I know you set me up, but I don't know how to do it, Eileen. I don't, oh, I see, I see it now. I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
There you go.
Okay, um, I, I just want to say in this case that the, the Kumars applied for a building permit. And it, and I, I just want the board to see this only in case, um, you've heard something about this application. Because we're here for this application because, um, we had a, they had applied on their own for a building permit, which was given to them in February to add a door and some windows, okay? But they were really applying, in their minds, they were applying for a permit. This is the entire application for the permit that I'm showing you now. And they were really, um,
That'll be A one. The permit?
A one.
A one, that'll be A.
Yeah, A one. It's the actual building permit from, I'm going to say, February of this year. Included in that permit, these drawings, which are an eight and a half by 11 format, and these photos. They were granted a permit by the town. And that work, in their minds, was to sheetrock the garage. They, and convert it into a family room. And the documents are, it's clear for me to say, are, were unclear. And, um, I guess it was a misunderstanding that occurred between the documents that they provided to the town and the, uh, what they intended in their minds to do. So the building department came out and conducted their rough framing inspection and approved it. And then, uh, to complete the work. And then they sheetrocked and completed their work. And then when the building, when Frank, the building inspector came out for the final inspection, he said, you know, you've removed the garage by converting the existing garage into a fa- family room. And the ordinance requires a garage. Um, this was sort of news to them, I'm going to say. So what they did was they really hired me and Frank said, I guess Frank said to them, we won't find you as long as you're going to proceed with this application. And they came in front of, or they had me prepare these documents, what you have in front of you, and these drawings are exactly the same as yours. And if I look at the existing survey on the left side here, you came up the driveway and you turned a right into this garage. But they have deleted that garage. And so what our proposal is, is to come up the driveway and drive straight into a garage at the end of the driveway itself. I cannot put the garage behind the existing garage because right there is about a four and a half foot drop off in grade. Like the driveway has been built up on grade. So we ended up putting the garage here, keeping it 12 feet off the property line so that we wouldn't violate the side yard setback. But we ended up violating the garage door facing the street. I surveyed Old Short Hills Road. I, I came, I'm going to say a mile out from Essex Street. And I started surveying just below East Hartshorn. And from East Hartshorn to Silver Spring, which I think kind of is where this area is, I saw 13 homes with garages facing the street on this side of the road. I didn't even deal with the other side. It was only dealing with the left side. So I don't think it's really out of character to the neighborhood. And it would allow us to get back into conformance with the zoning ordinance. Now, if I look closely at this driveway, you can see that the driveway comes in and it kind of kicks to the right. So that also helps me to mitigate the view of this garage from the street. This, these drawings also would allow us to update, I'm now on my BOA two sheet, update the existing garage that has really been converted into a family room. And get that update so that it's a little more accurate with the information that the, um, original building permit had. And there is my new garage faced 12 feet off the property line. If I, um, go on, you can just see the old garage, which has already been converted into a family room and our new garage. And also now I'm on, below here, I'm on the, in the backyard. You can see how the garage itself is really elevated from the uh, grade in the rear. We, I added this stoop because they have no access right now from this garage into the backyard. And this deck area that's over here on the left is existing, previous, was previously built. Okay, the same is true. I'm now looking on the longitudinal side, like the left side. I have actually removed the garage doors and constructed the new garage at this, um, site. The, I just put in two photos of the existing building, which I guess would be my A two, exhibit.
Yes, A two.
It's really the existing house and this existing structure on the side. And if I come around a little bit, you can see the existing house with the existing garage doors. But these garage doors have really been already sheetrocked over on the inside. It's really not a garage, even though it appears to be one. I did a video going down the road if you would like to see it. I was kind of asking, asking you, Joe, if you would like it.
Sure, play it.
Okay. It, it shows.
That'll be A three.
A three, the video. It shows, I'm going to say, really the worst condition, but then I want to come back. That's Great Hills. I'm going north, I'll say, right out to St. Barnabas. Great Hill's taken off to the left. His house on the corner, actually the garage door is facing, you could probably see if you look on the left here. That garage door. This is our site. And I just want you to notice that little grass area here, which I think would be smart to plant to minimize the view of this. I'm going to go on. I, I think I went too far. That's my worst exposed situation, right? The garage would really be right where this car is. I left five feet from the garage to the house to, in order to put a gate to get into the backyard. Then I come on, there's the neighbor with garage, you know, facing the street. I, I didn't need to do that. And then I, yeah, I just quit after I got up a little bit. So I, I guess I'd like to go.
Before you move on, Tim, before you move on, your listed documents showed a PDF of a plan. I thought there was a sheet that was not in the package.
No, I think the PDF would have been the PDF of the BOA plans, the BOA one.
Yeah, go, could you go back to that for a second?
It would be for me, BOA.
Right now.
Two, oh, I'm sorry.
I, okay, I, we have that one. Uh, was there another?
BOA two, and then I have a BOA three.
Right.
And then a BOA four.
Is there a BOA four in the package?
Yes. Okay. On BOA four, those garage doors are still there on the outside, even though it's been sheetrocked over on the inside.
That's correct. And on my drawing.
Are you changing the garage doors or taking them out?
We're taking them out because it doesn't make sense to me. You know, they left the garage doors and, but we took them out on our drawings. I, I thought it looked silly on, you know.
Right, so now.
So on my drawing, we've taken them out and put in siding. That's what we're indicating on that.
Okay.
On my BOA four sheet.
Well, your clients are okay with a condition that the garage doors be removed?
Yes. And this building permit would have the garage doors being removed. So, um, Frank wouldn't sign off on the permit without their removal also, so.
Okay.
As long as my documents have it. When I was talking about planting, I just want to go back. I'm talking about that area. Like that is an area which we could probably even, uh, you know, a six-foot conifer on either side of this walkway would really block the view of that garage.
How far, how far back from the street will the new proposed garage door be?
It's 92 feet from the property line and 106 feet from the curb. So it's pretty far back.
Thank you. Are there any other questions of the witnesses?
I have a question.
Yes.
Size garage is that? Is that a one-car garage?
Yeah. Yes.
Yes, it's a one car. It's like a one and a half. It's, um, the garage is 15 foot, four inches wide. It only has one nine-foot door. It's, um, I'm looking at my BOA two sheet. It's, it's, you can see we put a core in it. There's room here on either side. I, I set the width by going 12 feet off the property line to conform to side yard. And then I wanted to leave three foot six to be able to get a gate in between the garage and the house so you could walk in. That's how I got the 14 or 15 foot four.
So the previous garage was a two-car garage, is that correct?
Yes, yes.
So I'm having a problem with this story, so. And particularly since leaving the garage doors there to make it look like it was a garage, but it was sheetrocked on the inside. So the cars are going to be parked in the garage? I mean, there's one car to be parked in the garage, or how many cars are we talking about?
We can only put one car in this garage.
How many cars do we have on the property?
Uh, we have one car right now.
Say that again?
Uh, we have one car.
One car.
Um, I'm sorry, are you able to hear me?
We can hear you.
Yes.
We have one car.
Any, any other questions for those witnesses?
I have a question.
Yes, Joy.
To the drawings, the, um, the garage door that's shown is, is pretty standard. Has consideration been given to, um, a, a more interesting, um, garage door?
Yeah, we could change it to a carriage style door. You know, you know, more of a, like a, a carriage style. I could change it. Let me just see what we drew.
It's true, like the traditional grid one. Four of the three or something, yeah.
Yeah, no, we could change that to a carriage style door. Yeah. I don't know why my guys drew that actually.
The side of the garage now have no windows. That's going to be a lot of wall. So I'm just wondering if the garage could transform or something. It seemed like it could be very solid.
The sort of, where the existing doors were removed, you mean, right, Joy? Yeah.
Yeah.
I know, I was, I, I think we would be better to put two windows into that wall.
I think it might break the scale up.
I mean, it's, it's like, it's a big wall. I, I know you didn't want the windows, but I, I really think you need the windows in the wall. Mr. Kumar, I'm talking to you. That, that is not.
Um, yeah, you know what, at this point, I mean, I would just prefer to go with whatever board feels more comfortable with. I mean, we, we are okay with whatever the board feels more comfortable with.
Steve?
Yeah.
Joe? I just want to make sure I have an understanding that there is no hardship here other than the hardship created by the applicant. Is that right?
I think that's, I, I guess, I, I, I think you're correct.
And also, could you address the positive and negative criteria associated with this application?
Well, before he does that, in addition to the hardship that's created by the applicant, I think based on Tim's testimony of a four and a half foot change in the elevation behind the converted garage, um, you know, that's a hardship related to the land. In order for them to put a side-facing garage behind the new converted family room, they would have to bring in four and a half feet of fill. So.
It would be a major effort and it would also force me to extend the driveway and make this paving look even longer.
And it would increase lot coverage.
Yeah, because the pay, when I look, when I drive on the road now, the paving looks excessive to me. So I, I didn't really want to put this garage behind my new building. And therefore I would be in a situation where I have to actually add, you know, let's just say I went 15 feet, 15 feet of paving time by 30 feet wide.
Okay, but there's, there's any number of alternative solutions to what you would have to do if the board denies this. I mean, we, we can't necessarily take that into consideration, right? In our deliberation as to what else you might have to do. But can you still, you know, talk about positive and negative criteria?
I'm only saying it because it is a little bit of a site-created hardship. The fact that we'd have to add all of this additional fill. The I think that the negative aspect to this project is that the garage door is facing the street. And the way to mitigate that is to change the doors to carriage doors and add planting at that intersection by the front walk that I was speaking about before, so as I can minimize the view of the detached garage. I think that's the best way to mitigate the problem. But it is true that this condition has been created. You know, half, I think this condition was created because of a really, really poor set of documents and a misunderstanding of the intent of the homeowner and the interpretation of the town of what was being permitted. I mean,
Right. The owners told the homeowner to understand local ordinances and regulations. That's.
I agree. That's 100% right. Yes, I agree.
But I'm trying to get some clarification on this. So explain to me how we got the garage converted into living space in the first place?
You know, the owner submitted those seven pages or submitted those five pages to the town, and the town granted them a building permit. And they were the town actually did rough framing inspections. The drywall or the studs were up, the electric was all in. But there was a miscommunication somehow where the town didn't interpret the drawings to being the removal of the garage, but the owner intended, I think I'm saying the right thing, right, Mr. Kumar, that the owner intended from the beginning to do the work. It's really, I, you know, I guess I'm gonna sort of say this on record, but it's really like a little bit of a like, the documents have to be better before the town issues a permit.
Well, can I?
I'm just saying, but, you know, yeah.
Documents that was submitted, which are very difficult to read, did they?
Possible, I'd say.
Yeah. Did they have any wording that said that was a family room, or did it just say drywall? Because people do drywall garages and the fact that.
Well, that's true too, yeah. He could have just sheet rocked and drywalled his garage. He left the doors.
Something missed by the township.
Right. Did you say you want me to go back in here and take a, or I have them here. I have them, I have them, yeah, I do.
Eileen, did these plans come through zoning originally when he applied? No?
I don't believe that he came to zoning because they came in as, like he said initially, they were gonna sheet rock. And I think the way it kind of was presented.
As a runout?
As a, they were gonna sheet rock the garage and do electrical in the garage. So the rough inspections were done of the sheet rocking and the framing. And then when they went out to do the final is when the building inspector realized it was a full conversion of the garage to a family room, and that's when it came to me.
The, I can, if you want to share again, I can show you the floor plan. Joy, if you'd like to see it. It says kind of nothing. It doesn't even have any electrical on it.
But there's no notation that it's a family room?
No, there's no notation that it's even a garage. Just like.
And is there, well, you can't, I can't, does the sheet rock show on the inside covering the garage doors?
No.
If you can tell.
No. Would you like to see it? It's easy for me.
It's okay. No.
Someone with the unwittingly duped the township, that's all.
And it happens a lot. I know many houses in my neighborhood that have done that, and they keep the garage door. And there's houses that have been built without garages and got away with it. Just putting in context, I don't think it's right, but I don't know if people aren't aware that they honestly didn't need a garage, which I'm not, I know it's supposed to be on the owner, but I'm not sure how they find out unless they inquire, which they should, but.
I just find it hard to believe if the building department didn't ask at some point, are you converting this to living space?
Or I don't know, I found it hard to believe that they give a permit on drawings that was so incredibly poorly done. How could they issue a permit on drawings that look like a child's drawing?
With the thing that whoever was doing the construction or the renovation would actually have knowledge of the code and maybe bring it up to the owners.
I know in New Jersey, an owner is allowed to sign the drawings. Don't have to have a registered architect or an engineer. It's one of the art states, but it's just pretty sad that those kind of drawings got approved.
Maybe I'm off base here, but I am not really much interested in how this all happened.
Right.
Rather, what the application is actually all about. And I went and looked at this property. I understand entirely what Mr. Clessy was saying. First of all, the traffic, as we all know, moves on that street with amazing alacrity. I don't know what the speed limit is, but I, I know that nobody travels under 50 miles an hour there. This proposed one-car garage is 90 feet back from the street, and I think the idea of putting some hedges or greenery around the entrance to that sidewalk makes some sense. I also wanna point out that the property directly across the street has a front-facing garage, and the property immediately to the right has an exposed front-facing garage that is obvious to anyone driving by. And it's not anywhere near as far back from the road as this one will be. So I'm, you know, I understand that we have an ordinance that says no front-facing garages. But if there is a property anywhere in this town where A, you're not gonna notice it, and B, if you do notice it, as Mr. Clessy said, it's kind of common to the neighborhood. This is the property. So I you know, really, although I'm a little bit torn by this, I don't think it would pay for the board to get involved in a whole, you know, analysis or an attempt at an analysis as to how this all happened. Is there a hardship? Yes, I think putting the garage in the backyard would A, possibly create a new variance for a lot coverage, but more importantly, the drop-off, the grade differential in the rear is such that I think that creates a bit of a hardship myself in putting a garage back there. I, for all those reasons, I'm less inclined to spend a lot of time and effort trying to figure out what happened here when we really don't know what happened. And I think we should maybe just look at this as an application that seeks this one variance, which in my view is probably justified. But anyway, that's my own personal view of it.
I would like to add something if I may. And that is that we'd agree to change the doors to carriage doors, plant six, six-foot conifers along the right side of the driveway, and add two double-hung windows where the old garage doors were.
In my view, that does it, but it's only my view. I'm only one vote.
Do you have members of the public here on this?
Yes, is there anyone from the public here, Eileen? No.
And Danny's, Danny's here, but I'm not sure.
I think he just, I don't think he's really, I don't know that he's here. I just put it back in the attendees. I don't know that he's actually here. So.
Is it my turn?
Yeah, sure.
No, I disagree with you on the fact that it's not worth talking about how this happened, and we did that, and I think we have learned something. And it's not that we haven't done that before, so I think that it was worthy to do that for this application. But I think also, also the front-facing garage door ordinance is fairly recent, so a lot of those houses are grandfathered in because they had their front-facing garage doors before the ordinance was put into place. That having been said, I think Mr. Clessy has done the best that he can to ameliorate the problem and to provide some resolution that would be acceptable. And although I was gonna vote against the application, I think that with the particular things that Mr. Clessy mentioned, I can support it.
You said six-foot conifers along the right side of the driveway, like facing the property?
Facing the property, right side, yes. Six, six-foot conifers. I think it would let me move them around and put them in the right place. That's why I'm saying. So like, I'll look at it up there, make sure it makes sense.
But the purpose of those conifers is to screen the view of the detached garage from, from the street, correct?
Yes.
For traffic heading south toward Millburn.
Yes, yes.
Yes, Joy. We can't hear you.
You're muted.
Can't hear you.
I have a question. The ordinance I understood to be put into place for visuals, like not to see the garage. But is there a possibility it's also there for safety? Because if you have a side-facing garage, you can then back in, like back around it and come out of your driveway frontwards, whereas now I don't see how they could possibly do that. It's a very hard, I mean, I would never have gone in that driveway. I just kind of whizzed by when I went through it because I would never want to come out backing up into that. I'm just wondering if there's any history about that. Because I do think it does create a little bit of a safety issue.
Well, I think all that paving stays. Like, there's enough room to do a K-turn back there.
Does it?
It's like 30 feet wide. There's actually a lot of paving back there.
Okay.
We're not moving it, so. I know what you mean, that they don't have the benefit of the
Well, they can just do.
Pulling the car out of the garage, right? I know, Mr. Kumar, do you, how do you come out of the driveway now? Like for the last, I don't know, three weeks or three months?
Yeah, so we never actually back up into the road. We have enough room in the driveway to be able to turn around, and then the car's always front-facing when we approach the road. It would be so we do not have any problems doing that with the amount of space that we have.
Steve?
So I agree with the comments that Mary and Joy have both made. I mean, these ordinance are there for a reason, including safety. There's also the issue of, and I have to disagree with you, Joe, we have to take into consideration why this application is being presented, because the applicant brought it up as the reasoning, so we can't ignore that testimony. We're, I think, obligated to consider it. There's been no real discussion about the positive criteria associated with this. I would I would argue that a detached garage diminishes the overall value of the property, but that's just my opinion. I agree with Joy that there is a safety issue associated with it. It is, as we've heard before, a self-inflicted wound. No one has mentioned the solution of converting the old garage back to a garage, right? That's also an option, and you can do a more traditional addition in some other manner. So for those reasons, I cannot support this application.
Okay, I think it's time for somebody to make a motion. Either to, either to approve or deny the request for the variance for a front-facing garage. Anybody?
I'll make the motion to approve with, with the the conifers and all those things that Tim.
And the windows in the.
The windows, yeah.
In the.
Right, so it'll be, right, it'll be that the architect submits revised plans reflecting a carriage-style garage doors to double-hung windows in place of, when those existing garage doors are removed and the placement of the six-foot, six-six-foot conifers that'll be above the root wall on the right side of the driveway to screen the view of the detached garage from the street. Okay, so that's the most.
And the carriage doors. Carriage garage door, carriage-style garage doors.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor. I'm sorry, has it been seconded, Eileen?
Not yet.
Not yet. Is there a second?
I'll second it just to get it up to a vote.
Mary McNabb?
Yes.
Craig Plentner?
No.
Jody Sharma?
Yes.
Joyce Segal?
Yes.
Steve Togar?
No.
Jessica Glad?
Yes.
Joseph Steinberg?
Yes. What is the tally?
Five to two.
Five to two.
Variance is granted.
Thank you.
With those, with those three conditions.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
But is there any other business to come before the board?
Thank you.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved?
Second.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
At 8:49, which is better than 11:28, which was the last one.
That is true.
You jinxed us.
Okay, see you guys on the 17th.
Everybody.
Have a good night, everybody.
Good night.